Please stand for salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. This meeting is now called to order. The Borough Chief right to compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act has provided adequate notice of the time, date, and location of the meeting to the Esberry Park Press filed notice on the Borough Clerks with the Borough Clerk and posted notice on the Borough Office and on the Borough Website. Meeting is open to the public, and we welcome you all, and good evening. Okay, onto... Oh, we have some oaths, okay.
High Elizabeth Julia.
High Elizabeth Julia.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support...
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And that I will bear...
True faith and allegiance to the same and to the government established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people, I do further solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the office of the public, planning its only board, class four member, for your chair, according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Elizabeth's been with us for a long time.
I say a name.
I, Mark Tomlin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same as to the government established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people, I do further solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the office of the public, planning its only board, alternate, not two, not three, sorry, for two years, according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Okay, onto a roll call, please.
Okay, Ms. Bills, Ms. Absent. Mr. Cashmore.
Here.
Chairman Cunningham.
Here.
Mr. Julia.
Here.
Vice Chairman DeSeyo.
Here.
Mayor Calhoun, Ms. Absent. Mr. Lawrence.
Here.
Councilman Loxtead.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz, Ms. Absent. Mr. Zalina.
Here.
And onto the January 23rd meeting minutes.
I'll move the minute, Mr. Chair.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Cashmore.
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham.
Yes.
Mr. Julia.
Yes.
Mr. DeSeyo.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Councilman Loxtead.
Yes.
Mr. Zalina.
Just abstain. Onto the resolution for application number 2023-10. David Meyer, 24 Surf Street.
I'll move the resolution. Did you skip Milton?
No.
Yeah, five days.
Oh, I did.
That's fine. Well, I'll move the mayor's resolution, Mr. Chairman, just to stay. I'm gonna move the mayor's resolution.
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
And a second?
Everybody's time to move along tonight because of the...
I'll second that.
Big agenda, you know, let's go. We can drop that. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cashmore.
Yes.
Chairman Cunningham.
Yes.
Vice Chairman DeSeyo.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Councilman Loxtead.
Yes.
And that's it.
Yeah, I think that I probably skipped that because I can't vote on that.
Oh.
Ah, okay. You can still call.
I can still call.
So we had a motion to be on the second floor?
What, the Milton?
Onto the Middleton resolution.
I'll move the Milton.
Garrett Middleton and Dog.
I will move the Milton resolution.
Second?
I'll second the Milton.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Cashmore.
Yes.
Vice Chairman DeSeyo.
Yes.
Councilman Loxtead.
Yes.
Okay, onto new business. Looks like the agenda says we're doing applicant BD Real Estate Adventures LLC. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, Montenegro, this applicant.
Within the 200 zone. Thank you, Mark. Let the record show that Mr. Zalina has stepped off of the board. What is that?
Ready? Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the Board, Rick Brodsky on behalf of the applicant BD Real Estate Adventures LLC. Mr. Montenegro, service in order?
Uh, yes, we've reviewed it, and it is in order. Board has your section prepared to move forward.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, the application before you this evening pertains to the properties located at 1132 Ocean Ave and 1124 Ocean Ave. 1132 is the site of the former Yokes on You Restaurant. That is Lot 1 on the plan that you have. 1124 is the former Rory's, which is Lot 2. So we've got Lot 12, Lot 1 and 2. The applicant this evening, BD Real Estate, owns Lot 2, the old Rory's, which is the sort of V-shaped building, and then actually has a lease agreement for Lot 1, Yokes on You. And the application before you really is somewhat limited to seeking site plan approval to basically combine these two buildings. They already, it's like a big, it's like a U. It is a U, and the idea is taking these two rest, former restaurants, breaking through, if you will, and combining them into a single restaurant. So that's really the long and the short of the application. There's no new construction proposed saved for a small vestibule in the courtyard area, which is kind of like a reception area that'll be used for the restaurant. Restaurant use is permitted in this zone, in the B-zone, and the restaurants that's proposed, you'll hear, is, you know, similar to the Rory's use with respect to operationally-wise, hours of operation and so forth, a little more upscale in terms of menu. And, you know, consistent with the prior Rory's use, consistent with the prior Harry's use before that. So that's really the nature of the application. The, nothing's changing from an operational perspective, and so basically what I'd like to do is have Tony Condeuris, that he's sworn in, and just walk the board through what's there now and what's proposed. And then I do have with me also the principals of the applicant, Eric Daley and Keith Rutherford, who are sitting in the room as well, and Keith, Eric will be, come forward after Tony to just walk the board through, you know, the proposed operations and that type of thing. And there you have it.
You raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear the testimony you want to give here tonight to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name, for the record.
Anthony Condeuris, C-O-N-D-O-U-R-I-S.
Without any objection from the board members, all executive provincials, before this board, you've been here many, many times.
All right.
And thanks for coming back.
Okay, Tony, if you would, I see you have an exhibit. Is that an exact copy of the plan that was submitted to the board?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And that case we won't separately market if it's not understood.
All right, so Tony, just real quick, walk the board through what's there now.
Sure.
And we'll go through.
Yep. I'm sure you're all familiar with the building. It's been here for years, but so this, on this side, you'll see the L-shaped building, which is actually Rory's right now. There's also this courtyard that Rory's is using as an outdoor seating area. So what we've done here is really just reconfigured some of the tables and the bar, and they're still the same-sized restaurant. The kitchen's in the exact same place where it was. As Rick mentioned, the only thing that we're adding from a building standpoint is this small vestibule here, which is on the courtyard. So that vestibule does create a slight increase in building coverage, but it does not create any more lot coverage. We do have, our lot coverage and building coverage are both existing non-conformities. The lot coverage is staying the same. Again, there's a slight increase in building coverage that's being caused by the vestibule. And then if you look at this other leg of the U here, that's currently the Yokes on You Restaurant. That's where the applicant has a lease agreement, so they are going to create another restaurant area on this side. It's gonna have a separate entrance, probably a separate theme to it, but it will be connected to one of the entity. They're going to create a connection to the kitchen in the back here, so this kitchen will serve both sections of the restaurant. We're adding a few handicap accessible bathrooms, and in this area in the back here, I'm not showing it now because this was a previously submitted set of drawings, but we are creating a, about a 1100, excuse me, 11 by 11 room where we will be keeping the garbage, and there'll be a door put into the side here, so when it comes time for the garbage picked up, the employees will take the garbage outside, it'll get picked up, but for the rest of the time, it will be stored inside.
And you're adding the bathroom is now going to be accessible to the courtyard? You're adding a bathroom?
That is, yes, that is correct. That is accessible in the courtyard.
So, Mr. Brodsky, I just have a question. I'm confused as to ownership and merger and what's happening here, because if Lot 1 is going to remain under separate ownership, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
But yet they're being connected as if it's one use.
Yes.
Are they gonna be...
Pursuant to a lease, there'll be whatever necessary easements, whatever easements are necessary, although it is leased space.
Right, so what happens when the lease runs out?
When the lease runs out, if it's not renewed, that would have to be closed off and given back to the landlord. The liquor license will, the liquor license will be for the entire space, the entire premises, but if the lease were terminated, the ownership of that license would stay with BD and would stay with, you know, with the larger property.
Not true.
I don't know.
I figure you're not sure it's doable.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you need to do a place-to-place transfer.
And expand it without expanding it.
That's correct. That's correct.
Because we certainly don't want, we certainly don't want to leave Lot 1 with suddenly, liquor, how long's the lease?
No, no.
Twenty years.
Twenty-year lease? Yeah.
But is there any, is there any chance?
As you're young, that's a start.
I'm not trying to complicate this. I just see complications in what's being proposed, you know, for future...
Well, you know, this section's gonna be...
Yeah, I mean, the guy's, the buildings already exist, they're contiguous today.
Right?
Right? So you know. So we have that door.
If, yes, in the back. If the lease were to expire and not be renewed, and this applicant does not end up purchasing that property, which is certainly a consideration over the course of the next 20 years, then it would, that door would be closed, it would be returned to its original configuration as it exists today, and the liquor license would stay with, like I said, the applicant, BD Real Estate.
So that will have, those will all have to be conditions of approval.
Yeah.
And I think they're probably gonna have to, and again, I know 20 years is a long time. I think it happened 20 years, the business could fail in 20 years.
Yeah.
You know, in 10, 15 years. Hopefully it's not, because the idea is really cool.
Right.
But I think it's gonna happen from back, for lease site plan approval for both uses if, if they were to separate again.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that's fair. I think that's fair, if we would have to come back to continue the...
Wouldn't be you.
It would be them.
It would also be you, well, it would be you for the laundry, the lower laundry property, because we're basing this site plan approval on the fact that now you have an interior bathroom, a courtyard bathroom, and then you're gonna lose that courtyard bathroom if you use to separate.
That's right.
So you would have to come back.
Yeah, yeah, I think...
And also the garbage.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, we'd have to relocate the garbage.
So I think that would have to be a condition of approval too, and just hope that our wonderful building department picks up on it in another 15 years, but...
I think the hope is that the applicant will acquire that property.
I would hope so too, because it would make life a lot easier.
Yeah, exactly. And Tony, signage, we don't show any signage, but it's gonna be...
It's gonna be very small ever.
Comply, yeah. It'll comply with the ordinance.
Wait, I'm just going through Dave's report. Deliveries, I'll talk to, you know, we'll have, we'll have Eric speak to deliveries, but it's just typical box trucks. Trash we covered. Oh, there's a, a cool, it's a cool sort of plaque, right?
Yes.
On this building that the applicant's pretty excited about.
Yeah, it's a, that will remain.
Yeah.
If we have to work around it, it's not...
So I was thinking, I'll just throw this out as a possibility, if you guys, I was thinking maybe some sort of a historical dedication to the town, giving the town, if someone is ever gonna destroy that sign, they'll want to, the town should be given the right to take the sign first, so that wouldn't hurt you. Is that something that you record as a deed, as a deed restriction? Again, it wouldn't hurt you, because the town says, no, we don't want it, then you do what you want to do, but at least give the town a right, and nothing would happen to it in the interim.
So you're saying in the event of the sale of the building of the...
If someone was looking to destroy this, does everybody know what we're talking about?
Yes.
So that building, that portion of the building on Surf Street was the original Seabright Jail, and there is a plaque going, and there's a plaque on the building from 1894 stating the, which is pre the current Seabright Borough Council. It's the original Seabright Borough Commission, when we were still part of Ocean Township. And there's a plaque there with the names that was dedicated when it was the Borough Jail. So it's really cool, somehow it has survived this entire time.
Back on its corner by the existing wall.
Yeah, on Surf Street, and I don't know how it survived, but it's still there. I'm not afraid if they touch it, it's gonna fall apart, but it's there.
I think how it survived is it's not just like a plaque that's...
Right, it's in the wall.
And because it's stone built into the wall.
Yeah, so I was thinking if maybe giving the town the first right, if someone wanted to take down that wall, or something the town would have.
I'm just trying to figure out how that would...
You can, you can do it. I've seen historical deed dedications before.
Yeah, and so, but procedurally, I mean, if a buyer come, we recorded, no, but I'm saying after the fact, now a buyer, a buyer, so then the buyer would be put on notice.
Correct.
If they are not going to maintain that.
Right.
They have to...
Offer to the town, and the town says, no.
Give them a certain amount of time, and if the town says, we don't want it, they can proceed to...
And do whatever they want. Exactly. Mark, the same thing happened with the school plaque. Yes. So we should look at that resolution, maybe? Well, the school resolution, we didn't record a deed, we just told the school that when they were taking down the building, if they could preserve, if they could give us a plaque, that was what we would have. So we had the advantage at that point, we actually knew they were tearing down the school, and they did, it deserved it for us. Here's something that's been there, and we've never had an opportunity to secure a right over it, so it's our opportunity to do so, here with this application. Yeah, I don't think it hurts the applicant at all.
Where's it located? Is it in the area where they did that exit for the...
No, no, because that's on, that's on the Yokes Building.
Yes, it's actually on the Harry's building right there.
The garbage door is over here.
I mean, it's hard pressed to think that anyone would ever want to get rid of it, but...
There are people who do not care about history whatsoever. I'm glad, I'm glad you, I'm glad this applicant dies. Thank you.
I think, Dave, is there anything else?
Just loading, not loading.
Yeah.
How's it supposed to happen?
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have, I guess, the same as it goes on to, as goes on today, but we'll have everyone, just, yeah, soon as we finish Tony, whatever.
There probably should be some, something on the record about the waiver for parking.
Did you go to the parking lot?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, Tony, so where's the parking lot?
There's a nice courtyard.
Across the street.
Yeah, yes. Same as it ever was, you know, there's obviously nowhere on this site for parking to be proposed, and it will operate as in the best.
What's the difference in capacity between what, yeah, between what Yokes had and what Rory's had, to what together you're offering?
Well, we're proposing 51 seats in the Yokes side.
You know, is there a report by any chance?
I do not.
Okay.
65? I mean, you can get up and say that there. There is a resolution from, back, probably from Harry's.
Right.
I guess that limits, which we found out from Tom Haiti. And we're actually below that as well, right? Same or below? Yeah, well, 110, I think, was the number for that. Yeah, we'll have, we'll have Eric speak to that.
The only, the only difference...
No increases.
Listen, I don't have a problem with that, and I will speak for myself. The only difference is going to be that, of course, when Yokes and Rory's weren't originally, we're not running at the same time at their peaks. Now, both places are gonna be running at their peak time at the same time, so that's just something to be mindful, but it is what it is, so, yeah.
At least, we need to hear what their plan is, Eric.
All right.
That they're gonna run.
Yeah.
I'm sure, what are you saying on that? So proposed is 51 on the Lot 1 side, and how many are proposed on the Lot 2 side?
Well, we have 100 to the building, and there's also seating outside, but the fire inspector was not, he was only speaking of the building itself, I believe, so, so we're under...
We're calling about parking, so the courtyard doesn't have.
That's correct, so we have parking calculate, we have parking calculations for a much larger number on these drawings on the cover sheet, if you want to go through that. Yeah, so total number of seats, we had 51 in the Yokes, right? Right, we are, we are, according to our seating layout here. Yeah. We are proposing 51 seats in the Yokes Building and 167 seats in the Rory's Building, I'll call it, but that includes the courtyard.
The courtyard is seasonal, correct?
Yeah, the courtyard is seasonal.
So it's 50-something in the courtyard.
About that, yeah. Very similar. Or even a little less than what it was. Right. And we're not proposing any more. Any other questions for Tony?
Is there any questions?
I have a question. Okay, Andy, if you go back to where the garbage room is on the stage?
Yes.
So that's, that room is open, you have the doorway from the kitchen to the dining area.
Yes, yeah, it's not showing on this...
I imagine people are gonna be delivering food through the garbage room.
Building a small office there and the garbage room in this one area. You'll be able to zigzag through there to get to the...
But you're gonna close off the garbage room, so it's accessible. I mean, they can bring garbage in there, but it'll be closed off, and then they'll take garbage out.
Right, and there'll be a door on the inside to bring it in, and a door on the outside to get it out.
But there won't be, they won't be delivering food to the garbage room.
No, no, and the applicant can just keep moving. And the garbage room will be ventilated and, you know, air-conditioned, so it's probably tiled, so it can be easily cleaned.
Well, what is the roof, how does the garbage room handle up till now by Yokes on You and Rory's?
No, I don't, I'm assuming that they just put it out on her. Yeah. Yeah.
So there's a improvement from that?
Yes.
The venting, not on the sidewalk, on the roof?
Yeah, 100%.
Well, I had to ask. Just going back to the seating, I saw the email from the fire official, Mr. A, and he clarified that the original, or the most recent Rory's approval, zone approval allowed for 110 on the inside, not counting the courtyard.
Right.
So I think I heard you right, but you're not proposing more than 110.
It's actually 99, yeah.
What's the courtyard?
Right, just the inside, yeah.
Does the applicant need to talk about what kind of landscaping or enhancements he's gonna do inside the courtyard? We want to know that.
I can speak to it.
It's like they already did it.
Well, yeah, so we, we were, some of the landscaping was already, has already been sort of figured out. We did, we did make it so any lot coverage that we're creating is an even exchange of the existing lot coverage, so there is no increase in lot coverage by whatever reconfiguration we've done to this patio. But you can see there's some trees here with some open areas where that would actually be soil or mulch, whatever it is. And then this whole front area here too is an impervious landscape area.
The trees will be ground or planters?
The ground, unless it turns out that the ground can't support it, then of course we're gonna...
And the planters in front of the pies?
There's a, there's a wall on the front. I don't know the wall height of these planters yet, but they may be 24 inches off the ground.
You added an outside bar, I don't think that bar was there before, was it?
Who was the outside?
Those windows, like over there?
No, it was the outside bar.
If there wasn't one there?
Yeah, if there was.
Yeah, I'm just checking to see that's... Any questions from the public on the testimony, Mr. Condeuris? You're so good, eh?
Speechless.
Please raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear the testimony you want to give here tonight to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And please state your names, spell your last, for the record.
Eric Daley, D-A-L-E-Y.
Okay, Eric, just for the record, if you would, you're, you're one of the principals of the applicant BD Real Estate Adventures, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Can you just give the board just a little bit of your background and experience in this area?
I own several restaurants and bars in New York and Chatham, New Jersey. My primary focus right now has been finance, and we saw an opportunity at this property, so it'd be a combination continuing on the finance arm, but hiring a team to run this day-to-day basis.
And Eric, we were talking about a couple things, but maybe let's go to questions, or actually, let's go to, if you can just walk the board through a little bit, just the proposed operation, the type of restaurant, hours of operation, that kind of thing.
Today, or when we do open up, the hours of operation are probably gonna be closed Mondays and Tuesdays. Today, um, or when we do open up, the hours of operation are probably gonna be closed Mondays and Tuesdays and trying to figure out the demand. Um, we will not be open immediately for lunch until Friday, Saturday, Sunday, a lunch, brunch type of situation. As far as the evening is concerned, um, the thought is that we will be closed anywhere between eleven o'clock and one o'clock at eight o'clock. According to all of the regular requirements associated with the licenses that was issued to us.
Just, just to be careful, um, when you say they're gonna close Mondays and Tuesdays, is that included in the summer?
So
I just don't want me to block this up and
No, 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 I said what we originally opened.
Yeah.
Yeah, and as I may have mentioned, we're gonna see what the community demands.
Right.
Um, it may be at some point, seven days, a week with, with lunch. I'm just sharing from day one that we're planning on doing.
I just didn't want someone probably back.
No, for sure. I would say clarify that then. I mean, look, hopefully it, it works and, uh, but, you know, we had discussed just advising the board what's gonna happen initially and then hopefully things pick up and it can support, you know, six or seven days and can support lunch, the main could be seen. Um, and then hours of operation would be similar to the Rory's?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Which would, which is what do you anticipate?
Well, it's certainly not doing lunch. If we're opening up during the day, during the morning, call it eleven, twelve o'clock and then going straight through, probably not closing until dinner.
Okay. Um, and, uh, we talked about the vestibule. I mentioned it real briefly. How big is that and what is the function of it?
So the function is going to be the greeting station where if you have a reservation, you're going to be greeted by a host of hostess who will enter into your table, whether it's inside the courtyard or within the restaurant itself.
And then, um, in, in terms of operation, is it gonna be, or is this fluid? Is it gonna be one single, uh, restaurant? Is it gonna be dual themed or not?
Yes, it's gonna be very conceptual, um, like a different experience for each of courtyard or being courtyard a little bit more casual, a little bit more family oriented, it's gonna be more elevated. It's gonna be an elevated, um, Irish experience and the, um, left side, the Yokes, um, old property will be a more casual side as well. So depending on the demographics, depending on the experience you wanna have, if you wanna watch a football game or a ballgame, it's not gonna be on the primary side, it's not gonna be in the courtyard, it will be within the other side. Um, and the fare will be different and the menu will be different as well.
What about, um, that back room on the elevated side? Is that a private room or what is, what is that?
So we, we call it the lounge today and at some point, um, it's either gonna be one of two things or depending on, we don't, we're not a hundred percent sure of what percentage of the overall operation is gonna be food or alcohol. It might be a little food, anything, um, so that might turn into a dining room or a private room itself. But right now, the original plan is that's a little bit more of a speed easy-ish type of thing. Um, and that will have also access to, those plans are slightly different than the ones that were approved by the town for the M E P plans, but it has the two A D G that's in there.
And Eric, deliveries, what do you, what do you anticipate, uh, for deliveries?
So the deliveries will be coming through, um, the building, if you're traveling, you can see the entrance right there with our walk-in box, um, so it's gonna be going into the kitchen of the old, um, Yokes, excuse me, the old Rory's property.
Similar to, just put that
Yeah, the door, this door here.
Correct, yeah.
Of the, of the
So the garbage will be coming out of the Yokes, um, and that would be a similar to the, um, building as Tony mentioned.
And you're doing, and, and you're gonna do private, private trash?
So we, we're speaking with Roselli right now and we're going to one likely utilize that the days that the town does not pick up.
Definitely.
So the goal is, I guess, six days, nobody collects on site.
I'm sorry, this is private owner?
A combination of the town and private. I, I believe the town is one day frozen and the other days will be by Roselli.
Could I ask you a question about, uh, an entrance from the courtyard to the Yokes area? You're not having that.
We're not.
Just the back room.
Just the bathrooms.
Okay. Well, those bathrooms are perfect for it.
Correct.
But you can't get in from those bathrooms into the restaurant?
Correct. The, the whole thought behind it is if somebody wants to have a buyout of wedding party or whatever it might be, you have a private, um, area um, with bathrooms as opposed to going into the restaurant itself to bathrooms in the bathroom.
More bathrooms really is better.
Correct, and this way it limits the flow.
Um, two, two things. One, we, um, I don't even know if it's still there, but Rory's had built that staircase to the roof.
That's, that was gone from the
It is gone.
Yeah, that was part of our agreement to, to receive the C O that we had thirty days.
We both think that, good.
Correct.
And the pizza owners, yeah.
Yes, that, um, that, that was taken away as well.
All right, and the second thing is the biggest complaint over Rory's over the years was always music in the courtyard because there's all residents in the back. What is your plan with music in the courtyard?
So we, we truly do not have a plan as of right now, um, whether we are going to have music or not. I know I used to, I have a house in Seabright, my wife and I moved frequently there, so I know very much that they played music and I, I think some of the problems came that they exceeded the ten o'clock curve.
And, and the, that's a loss.
Yes, so, yeah, we, we're, we're not, I say we're not gonna do it, but if we are, we're gonna make sure that we're very compliant with, are we gonna be like even tied and shut down at nine-thirty at night? I don't know. Um, are we gonna be like Donovan's and shut down a little bit before ten if we do it, but they're not gonna have the large live bands there as opposed to some form of music. We wanna keep it open, but it's not gonna be, we don't think it's gonna be a daily thing.
So, so you'll agree that you will, I know you have to anyways, I know we have conditions, a specific condition that no musical, no music in the courtyard after ten?
Absolutely.
That's all I have.
Who are you?
My music was mine and Mark added, uh,
Okay, and that is always the major problem with that place, with the music, so please complain, I know. For rightly so.
Anyone in the public have a question of the gentleman's testimony? If not, public portion is closed.
Mr. Chair, I have nothing further. Um, uh, hopefully the, the board, unless the board has any questions, um, breathing new, you know, the proposal is to breathe a new life into existing buildings and, uh, upgrade it and have it become another vibrant part of, of the borough.
Uh, my only concern is the garbage thing back there. It's a little awkward right now. We're, we're going through a kitchen in here. It's not a kitchen. I know, I know that, I know that, I listen. Uh, this kitchen area, I, I think we'll need a new set of plans to
We will
To show on the books what that's gonna be.
Yeah, we'll submit revised plans, show
And show the door. The, the door exit or the
Yeah, and show the little office that's proposed for in that area as well.
The entire current kitchen of Yokes will be gutted.
Will be
So then we'll not be utilized and it is from functionality for dry goods storage, for the, um, trash room, the garbage room with the eleven by eleven as well as an office space.
This, this, if you're playing for the garbage room, the exit door is from the garbage room. That will
Correct, so the, the exterior.
You're not gonna bring it out to the hallway?
Correct.
Okay.
Tell me you want
You gotta figure that out.
Door's not showing here unfortunately, but the door, there is a door here and that, so the garbage room empties directly on the outside exterior.
Yeah, a lot of minutes of that room.
That's a pretty big room. It's gonna be pretty small. Anyone else? Let's open it to the public. If anyone in the public have questions with the testimony or a statement about the application. Apparently public tonight.
Excellent.
If not, the public portion is now closed. Is it discussion from the board or a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion. I think this is a good use and it is what it is already there. Um, I mean, I wish there was a solution to the parking. There isn't and, uh, I, I'm, I'll make the motion to approve the application and I wish this applicant passed.
Second?
I agree, I'm second.
We're all closed.
But you would have been calling that we discussed the application, I understand.
Mr. Trashmore?
Yes.
Chairman Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Julia?
Yes.
Mr. Turel?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Council Lexki?
Yes.
Mark Salina?
Please, we're going to
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the
How long do you think you need to do before you can open it?
We, um, we're seeing one improvement on approval on Monday for electrical today for the front of the house where the bar is.
Okay.
Next week, we're gonna get those inspections. Our goal is by the end of April.
Awesome.
Yeah, so by the end of April.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Just a little bit for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto Eric Bischoff, twelve South Street. Welcome aboard.
Yes, sir. May I sit? I would like to sit.
He's gonna swear something.
No, I'll stand for swearing.
Please raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear the testimony you are here tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And please state your name, spell your last for the record.
My name's Eric Bischoff. My last name is spelled B-I-S-C-H-O-F-F.
Mr. Condor, sir.
Yeah, man of the hour tonight.
He'll have to swear him again.
Eric, you're right. Do you swear the testimony you are here tonight on this application will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Hey.
Andy Condoris, C-O-N-D-O-U-R-I-S.
You think we're the torture court here? Good evening, sir. You have the board's attention.
Thank you. Thank you. It was a privilege to speak upon this board. Uh, my name's Eric Bischoff. As I've mentioned, I'm a lifelong Staten Island resident. Uh, just to give you a very brief background, I was a New York City firefighter from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and nineteen. Um, I was the Staten Island Borough trustee from two thousand and twelve, only until a few weeks ago, uh, to two thousand and fourteen. I served in that position for twelve years, representing firefighters of Staten Island and greater New York City. I had achieved five consecutive elections in that role. Um, most recently, um, pertaining to this particular property, uh, accompanied by my fiance, Julia Mackey, behind me. Uh, we have been, uh, quite, quite inhabited by the borough of Seabright for quite some time. We had, um, come to the attention that they had a house under foreclosure at the property location, twelve South Street. Uh, I had done quite a bit of research on this property and successfully acquired the property in foreclosure, um, back in January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, it took a little bit of time to gain possession of the property, but I successfully gained possession, uh, in July of two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, once we gained possession, um, we had made a decision that we'd like to move to Seabright as our primary residence. Um, and with that, we researched local architects and we come to the attention of Mr. Condoris and his background, we were quite impressed with. We retained Mr. Condoris, uh, with the main concern that the property is not at a base flood elevation. Um, when we had, uh, gone over some potential plans, the primary concern was to raise the property to proper base flood elevation, to provide onsite parking, to alleviate parking, uh, on the street, which I, I believe we've planned successfully do that. Julia and I have three children, um, all teenagers and they all love the beach. So the house is small, if you're familiar with it, it's quite close to this building. Um, we have very modest plans to, um, expand the square footage of the home and, um, you know, we, we think that it'll be, um, quite an improvement from its current condition. The, um, previous owner had been delinquent for quite some time in mortgage payments, taxes, utilities and water. Everything on the home is current. There were no current violations. We haven't had any since we took ownership. I had, um, successfully, um, done a similar project in my summer house in North Beach Island where we had done a roof raise. Um, that's our summer home. This would be our primary and we had successfully completed that project without a single violation. So that's my background and that's my intention for this property and thank you.
Here. So I'll, I'll walk you through what we're doing here. So, uh, if you look at the site plan here, um, you can see that the, it's a, it's a non-conforming lot from the standpoint of setbacks, building setbacks. Uh, but it is a somewhat wired property than, or at least there's more room on the west side of the property than you would normally see, uh, in these neighborhoods. Uh, right now, there is actually a, a one-story masonry garage that's attached to the back of the building here. And then just to the west of that, there is a, an industrial building that's actually being removed because they are right on the border of, um, the proposed redevelopments on there. So just one over from this property is some industrial building that, uh, as far as I know, are proposed to be removed. So that being said, um, this garage actually shares a wall with that one building that's gonna be removed. So the object here would be to just let the garage go and replace it with a deck. So that's what we're seeing here in this render. We have a deck in the area where that garage was. Um, so the first, um, no, let me, let me run you through the variances first here. So, uh, lot area required is eighteen hundred square feet. We're at eleven-twenty-five, so that's an existing non-conforming, not changing. Um, minimum lot depth is sixty feet. We have forty-five. It's also an existing non-conforming, not changing. Um, principal building, we have a, uh, a zero foot, a zero setback, uh, which is not changing. We have, uh, a rear setback requirement fifteen feet. We have six inches. That's an existing condition. That's also not changing. Um, although we are extending it vertically, I'll explain that in a minute. Uh, side setback requirements are three and total six. We have, uh, zero, zero right now and the deck would count the setbacks, so we're maintaining that same setback with zero, zero setback. Uh, and then maximum building height here proposing, uh, permitted is two-point-five stories. Uh, we are proposing three stories. Uh, reason being is the upper floor, although it does comply with a half story, uh, from a square footage standpoint, it does not comply with a half story from the standpoint of the walls. So I'll walk you through that too on the plan. Um, we are creating, uh, forty-four feet of parking area, uh, in, in the new garage. The house is being lifted, uh, to create a garage underneath. So that's, that's the first, uh, priority here was to get the house lifted and lift it high enough to get a, a garage. So that's what we're doing there. So we've created two, uh, parking spaces in that area. Um, at least two and
So only two? How many, how many do you need? I don't see any. It's only forty feet. No, no, I know that. I'm just asking how many, how many parking units do you actually need?
So it's a four-bed, four-bedroom home, so the borough's ordinance requires two, R S I S requires two-point-five.
Then you all have two.
The borough only requires two.
Yeah, let's go back to R S I S.
R S I S.
Which is thirty.
I mean, we have this, just so you know, and we're not kicking our ear, we go through this at every single application. Um, why do you need four bedrooms, five bedrooms? Well, there's, there would be four in this, in this home, so, and, um, the main reason is a family component. We have three children. I have a autistic son and I have a daughter. Sure, okay. So we're, we're hopeful that we can acquire a We have a daughter. So, we're hopeful that we can acquire a bedroom for each of the children. And so, also, the bedrooms, if you look at the square footage of the home, it's not a particularly large home. It's actually, I would presume, on the smaller side. So, the bedrooms are not, are large and approaching, but it will be appropriate for any composition.
Is nobody can get it apart? We just have such a parking property.
Well, there is a driveway on the right. Let me get my scale there.
That I thought it did is four.
That's okay, Mr. Lexki. You know, currently, there is no garage, you know. It's just down the street. You're certainly familiar with the street.
Very much so.
Yeah, so if I could get three, I'd love to get three.
How many bedrooms does the house have right now?
The bed, there's three.
That's three.
Yeah, the only, the only vision, if you see on the attic, so, that's gonna create a master. It's not much of a master, but that would be our master. And then the three remaining would be the master's room.
Yeah, they are relatively small bedrooms, the ones on the main floor here. But, you know, we have, we do have about 40 to 50. I honestly think you could probably get three cars in here if you had to, but it doesn't, from an RSIS standpoint.
But no one's realistically gonna do that.
Right.
And you stay some aside.
Existing concrete drive?
So, it's like, overall under 9. It's 8 feet, 8 inches and 14 and a half.
Right. So, you could fit a small car in there.
Is that, Anthony, is that driveway going to remain the same width as what's current?
The driveway on the west? Yeah, that would be the same width.
Yeah, so folks, I would say that's on record. The current driveway that's there, you can park a car, albeit not a large SUV, but a mid-size to a small-sized car, we do park it there regularly.
Okay. So, you could get the third car in that driveway.
It's not, it's not an RSIS compliant space. It doesn't meet the dimensions.
It's a real point five space.
One other thing I'd like to, I'd like to alert this panel. My understanding, and you would have more of an expertise than I, if you know the street, there's a large garage that's there that's vacant. That's part of a redevelopment. So, my understanding is the garage is coming down. So, even now, with the garage directly on the property line, you could still get the car in. That garage isn't gonna be there too much longer, is my understanding.
No, I mean, I'm happy that that driveway exists, even though it's not RSIS compliant.
I'm not.
I hit it already there.
No, only do we get to that.
Okay. So, just to walk through the plans, the second floor currently, this is the first floor footprint, which is existing. The second floor currently stops, that word of my hand is here. So, we are extending that rear non-conforming vertically just for the second floor. On the third floor, we are stopping it where it stops now. So, extending is vertically. So, we're extending that variance that you're part of there. And then, this is our finished attic or half-story, but it's not really a half-story. From a square footage standpoint, it is a half-story. It just doesn't meet the wall heights that are required. The...
Before we go to the next land, the staircase to that.
Uh, the staircase here?
Yep. Takes the whole width of this property. There's no access underneath. You can't get to the back. It's blocked.
Okay. Well, we're replacing what was, actually, there is a structure here now that's a garage.
Now, it's an open space.
Yeah, it's a raised deck. Correct.
And there's no way to get to it.
Um, that's true. The stairs are blocking your way to the back.
So, my suggestion would be to extend the deck further forward and maybe even step it down one or two, give you enough headroom underneath and put the staircase along the side of the garage.
Uh, bring the deck this way. That would work, although that would take up that one parking space that you're discussing, though.
Actually, it's not a parking space. 14 feet is a parking space. It's a stick. The car is gonna stick out on the sidewalk.
Right.
I built the two houses next door. I know the property's like, it's, the car sticks out in the sidewalk and blocks the sidewalk. So, that's not really, should be used as a parking space unless it was a little mini.
But, didn't you say you parked the car in there?
There are.
Yeah, but they stick out.
I mean, I don't know.
It blocks the sidewalk.
It blocks the sidewalk immediately, sir.
On a small car, sir, it is not. But on a medium or larger, it would shoot outside the yes.
Which is a knockback. Okay.
There should probably also be a door going out from the basement floor, from the first floor out to that space.
From the ground, though?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the thing.
Well, if we, we can figure the staircase that we can get underneath and to the back.
So, Dave, are you asking whether there's a door to the area below the deck or to the parking space?
Well, they have to get us inside what they wanna do. Like you said, to the, to the area below the deck.
Yeah.
Some kind of a door.
Yeah.
It has a different way of solving it.
Well, my...
I would make sure you both.
With his experience as a fireman, he knows needing to get to the back of a building sometimes. You can't get to the back of a building because when they develop the property next door, they're gonna build houses there and could put a fence up. You have no way to get around the stairs or no way to get to the back.
Just so I'm clear, sir, are you referring to, are you interested in grass here or on this floor here?
No, underneath the stairs.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
How?
Well, we could, we could probably just open up here under the foundation to make slides. I mean, Anthony would have the expertise of it. I don't see anything.
It wasn't actually from the street to that. What Dave's trying to get to is, the fire, you know, pulls up there and you can get to the back of the house. You can't go through the house and get to the back. There's no way to get there.
Oh, the access from the rear?
Correct. No way against the rear, on the ground level. Yes, you can go up the stairs against the deck, but they're saying that you can't get to the rear.
And then where are you gonna put your air conditioning system? Are you gonna try to get them underneath that deck? You have no access to it.
So, in the rear here, you should know this is kind of right on the property line. That's, that's the difficulty of it. I believe there may be another structure behind it.
Right. But if you don't have the staircase, you have access.
What Mr. DeCio's suggesting is that we take the stairs and move them here, which we can do, and create a way to walk.
Can't you tie into the main staircase?
The interior, the interior staircase?
Yeah. If you have the door down there right there. You have a door next to the sink. Only you have a door from the stairwell onto the front. Well, but you could, what this is, how many, hey, in case that was built or not.
That would have a stair directly. It would be nice to eliminate the stairs. Yeah, we could eliminate the stairs and do a spiral stair to that, to make it a door. Yeah, we could not have stairs at all. Then you'd still have your parking space or half parking space.
Right.
Now you have access to the back of the house. Yeah, I don't see a problem taking stairs out. Either take them out completely or if Mr. Bischoff wanted somebody to get down, we could put a spiral stair that he could get, that somebody could still get around.
Barely. But you could have a different location.
So...
So, then you take away from your deck and give it the whole way to the back or something of that same.
Right.
It's trade-off.
So, the only problem that we're having now is that we're sort of changing the entire application. And we don't really know what we're going on at this point if we, if they change.
No, my objection is, I have no objection to the whole application except for the standard.
No, I understand that, but I don't know.
Most of the problems.
So, I think the applicant needs to decide if they are going to remove the staircase completely. I mean, we know what that, we can envision what that looks like. That seems to be the easiest approach. Or if they would prefer to have a spiral staircase, we need to know where they want that on the deck. But we need to know what their goal is.
I would, I can answer that for you. I would remove the staircase because if I included the spiral staircase even in the rear, it would just take a little deck just to get the living in. So, what I can do is remove the staircase if that's the concern and still want, and then just have a straight interior access directly through the front and be able to access the deck from the kitchen area.
I see. So, there'll be no exterior staircase then, if I'm hearing correct?
The door.
Yeah, that's the easiest outcome for us.
I think that's the easiest.
Okay.
And by eliminating it, you're not only to recreate the staircase, but will block that spot that could possibly fit another car.
Correct. What did you think, Dave?
You still agree to put a door in the back of the garage for...
To the other side. Sure, yeah.
So, then you got the door.
Door from the garage to the open space below the deck and eliminate the stairs to provide access.
So, they have an existing non-conformity, I think Anthony went through this, but they have existing non-conformities for lot area and lot depth. And lot coverage is currently an existing non-conformity and building coverage currently existing non-conformity, which although they're adding to the buildings because they're not changing the footprint, the building coverage isn't changing. The new variances they're seeking are a front yard setback, which is existing, but because they're adding stuff on, they need a variance for the minimum side yard. Those are existing, but because they're putting an addition on, they need the side yard setbacks. Minimum rear yard, same thing, existing, but because of the addition, they need...
I'm sorry, what is the rear yard setback of what?
So, the rear yard setback requirement is 15 feet and they're at 0.6 feet.
And we're gonna extend the house up all that property line and here, three stories?
No, nine, two stories.
Two stories.
Oh, it's only a one-story addition.
Right. And the side yard is 3 feet for one, 6 feet for both. They're at 0 feet. That's what they're proposing. The front yard is 5 to 12 feet. They're at 0 feet. That's what they're proposing. They also need a variance for the number of stories. Two and a half are permitted. They're proposing three stories. The maximum building height is 35 feet. They're proposing 38 feet.
Is 38 permitted when they were found?
Right. 38 is permitted because they're raising the house to comply with the FEMA requirements and the borough's flood hazard, flood damage prevention ordinance.
So, there's several existing variances that are not being approved. Conditions are not being approved on the version by the extension of the house, and then we're adding this third story by virtue of definition. So, it's all new variances, but we're not getting rid of any old ones. Is that the application, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
They're getting rid of the garage in the back, which was a solid structure, and replacing it with a deck. But since the deck is more than 18 inches off the ground, it qualifies for side yard setback.
I understand.
So, but they did actually reduce the building a little bit in one spot and then extended another.
And I'm not sure how many parking spaces there are currently, but they are proposing two full parking spaces.
Well, it sounds like there's a million.
You have, you have three, you have a three-bedroom house there now with no parking. You have a four-bedroom house with two and a half parking.
Yes, sir. Let's correct that.
They're gonna improve the parking situation.
It'll certainly improve the parking.
By raising the house.
It'll improve the parking and, you know, folks, you would have much more expertise on this topic than I. But the block, it floods all the time. This house must be raised. So, you know, with, with the raising, it will certainly improve the parking. I can't swear to this, but I think it's quite possible to get three cars over there. Or certainly to...
Move the car where it wants.
Of course, why? You're not gonna bring a parking space. They don't wanna leave your car there, of course.
Pay attention to that.
We've got some kids coming up, but they're all gonna want cars.
What surfaces are you gonna use on the ground? Is it, is the new, is the driveway area today gonna be concrete again or something else? Is it, what's gonna be under the deck? Stone?
I would assume it's stone, yeah. The current, the current composition is concrete. It's in quite poor condition. I would depay this.
Did we get our answer on the, I don't remember, on the Eric machine?
Well, the air conditioning can be in the setback, so you have to decide whether you can try to stick them underneath the deck. But then you have to get special condensers bent sideways or figure out a way to put it up on a roof somewhere. I don't know.
We could also, we could possibly put them on the end of the deck too, in the back.
I was, I was thinking about the ductless conditions where I could have the compressors under the deck. They don't take a lot of space. I may have to elevate them though because of flooding, so I may have to raise them up off the ground.
That would be horrible. Or raise them to platforms.
The ductless ones, they have some brackets.
Yeah.
They can put, obviously, everything right up.
I have them on my, my summer home in LBI, same way bracketed directly to the building and also base water mission.
Do you currently have a house in LBI?
I do.
They like the beach.
It's a flood plain.
He's familiar with the plain.
You can judge the building, but you can't judge the property.
So, we, every application we approve, we always assume the person's not gonna live there because we have to. You know, even though they're saying that this is gonna be the permanent home, we always act as if they're not going to. But we can't discriminate between the two.
Well, I'll just, just...
We believe you.
But it's, it's fine. But I will clarify for you. My house in Long Beach Island is in Hyvol Harbor. If you're familiar with that, it's on the very direct north under the island. It's a wonderful beach town, but during the winter, it's completely shut down. So, that would not be our choice for primary residence, although we will be there this summer.
And we don't, we don't care. It's just because, 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 no, 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 no. The reason we bring it up because we know from experience, we have it going for every single person who came in here, developers, that I'm gonna personally design the premises. We don't be tired, rich, and with management in LBI, so.
I understand. My, my only point in, in giving that to this panel was to basically alert you that I've done a similar project without a single violation.
Right.
No, no problems from the township whatsoever. I successfully did that. This is actually a bit of a smaller project, but this is, this is where Julia and I wanna be. We're not, we're not looking to, to make this a money pay. We're looking to live here.
Right. And this is not gonna rise and fall on that anyway, but we appreciate that.
Yeah, we can't use that.
We want you here, David.
We want you here, absolutely.
We have enough problems with that.
I understand.
Yes.
Any other questions, board members? Let's open up to the public. Is there anyone in the public that has a question about the testimony or a statement about the application? If not, public portion is now closed.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the application. I like the conditions.
With all the conditions I've established, yeah.
We welcome you to the community.
Maybe we ought to repeat it.
They're gonna revise the plan to provide more from the garage to the open space below the deck. And they're also gonna revise the architectural plan to eliminate the outdoor stair from the deck so it can provide access to the rear below the deck.
We have a motion. We have a second.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Cashmore?
Yes.
Chairman Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Julia?
Yes.
Vice Chairman DeSail?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Councilman Lexki?
Yes.
Mark Salina?
Yes.
Right. Thank you very much.
Let's call up. Welcome to panel. Let's call up, welcome to panel. That's correct.
By the way, you guys don't have, you can say, you don't have to, we don't think it's true to you, but...
That might have been me to just tell them.
Some people, some people often get their approvals to like, "Come on, I believe they're going to be mad at us." We won't be mad.
No vaxes.
They worried about a new restaurant tonight? I decided to figure out that one in a while and pay more here.
Line it quick. Onto the Goldens, welcome.
And Mr. Chairman, you said this is a used variance, I do need to step down not because I'm not interested in the application, but because we, we are not participating.
Let the record show that Mr. Lexington is stepping down.
Your pledge, one pledge, three members have to step down. Yeah, the height D6. Not even, not even, it's been three feet? Well, because it's on the side, it's, it's...
Yeah. Because of the narrowness of the lot. The formula. No, but otherwise you're allowed to go three feet.
Right, but their lot is deficient width and area, so I think the maximum...
Yeah, they're actually at 30 total.
Right.
They're 33, but they...
33 and then 100 and 166.
Because it's a normal-sized lot, they could go three feet without a D variance.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Rick Rodsky, behalf of the applicants, Jonathan and Catherine Golden.
And Rick, I just, yes, we have, through efficiency, the, the notices and the mailings will check them and appropriate. I just should point out, we have a D6 and we have six members present available, so...
Understood. But Goldens have been snowed out the last two meetings, so...
Understood. Any excitement at all sometime?
Yes, yes.
See if you forget.
Okay, so in any event, the application before you pertains to the property located at Seven Atlantic Way, it's in your R2 zone. The application seeks variance approval to construct in addition to the existing two-story single-family residence plus the partial enclosure of, of an existing open garage area for storage. This, just by way of quick background, this is the Goldens' primary residence with their family. The Goldens purchased last year, in March of last year, and they're living there themselves and their three kids. And so it's a little tight, they're proposing an additional bedroom, so they can have, so that they can have that fourth bedroom and a, and a hangout room, TV room as well. That's, that's primarily what's, what's driving the application. There are, as there was some, a little sidebar earlier, there are a number of existing nonconformities, primarily, I would say, the size of the lot. It's fairly, it's fairly significantly undersized, so when you're undersized, in your R10 zone, I'm sorry, your R2 zone, minimum lot size is 4,000 square feet, this lot is 2,437 square feet. So, and, and it's also narrow. Minimum lot, minimum lot frontage is 50 feet required, this lot is at 32 and a half. So, you know, not surprisingly, there are existing nonconformities with respect to, you know, side setback, again, which are not being, which are being exacerbated by going up for that additional half-story, but not, not moving any closer to those side property lines. And in addition, as you'll hear from Mr. Condouris, actually, they're actually proposing an improvement to the existing front setback by removing those stairs and kind of, like I said, not, not complying with the required front setback of 25, but improving it almost double, 5.8 to 9.8, 5.8 to 9.8. And so the, the new variance that's, that's associated with the application is indeed a D variance and it has to do with the height. The height that's being proposed is 38 feet, and also, whereas the ordinance permits two and a half stories, what's being proposed is three by virtue, by virtue of your, of your definition. Now, you know, this property, this, this home was built post-sanding in 2014, so it was built in compliance with FEMA at that time when it was rebuilt. So it's not being proposed to be raised as part of this application because it's already been done. So there is a variance as a result with respect to the height, but, you know, clearly this height, and you'll hear from both Tony, who's done a number of the renovations on this block, as well as our planner, you know, this height fits perfectly with the majority of the homes in the neighborhood. So that's, that's sort of the background, a little bit of the background. Notwithstanding the undersized nature of the lot with respect to building coverage, the existing coverage is, what's permitted is 50%, what exists is 55.39, and that's not, that's not changing, that's staying the same. And it actually complies with lot coverage, 70% is permitted, it's in at 69.67. So not, neither of those two coverage sort of indicia of overbuilding, so to speak, are being exacerbated in any way, and it's kind of surprising based on the size of the, of the lot. We do have our side setbacks to, to deal with, but again, not getting any closer, just, just going up for that additional half-story. So unless the board has any questions, what I'd like to do is have this stranger step forward.
Another brief swearing.
You swear the testimony you already did here tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes. Anthony Condouris, C-O-N-D-O-U-R-I-S.
Have you testified before?
Yes. All right, Tony, let's get right to it. Again, I see you have on the easel, I guess, an exact copy of what has submitted to the board, what had been submitted to the board. Okay, so if you would, just walk the board through what exists at the property today and the conditions relating to it, and then what's proposed as part of the application.
Sure, so what we have today is a, is a two-story house that's built on a raised foundation, which allows enough room for parking underneath, and as you mentioned, it was compliant with the FEMA rules back in 2014 when it was built. So it's currently a two-story house, what we have, and it has a cover deck in the front and sets stairs in the front as well. So we have some front setback violations here. As Mr. Rodsky mentioned, we are actually improving the front setback, which is currently 5.8, and we're removing the stairs, which creates a 9.8 front setback. That 9.8 is pretty consistent with the rest of the houses on the block as well. On the lower levels, which is this drawing here, the house is actually on piles, so you can see here the piles. What we have done is just created a storage area underneath the house, which creates a transeptacle and basically a foyer, because the way up into the, now that, especially since we don't have exterior stairs anymore, the only way to get up into the house would be through this foyer to the interior stairs. We also created this recess in this spot here, which creates another parking space, which I'll show you toward the end, I have a diagram of the parking areas. So the first and second floors remain the same. The addition that we're proposing is a synthetic. Previous application, it does comply with the square footage requirements of a, of a half-story, but it's the, it's the height of some of the walls that are causing it to be considered a third story. So this addition is actually set back considerably off of the street and also off of the back of the house, so it's, you can see here, there's a roof deck in the front and a deck in the back as well, that the addition only sits in the middle of the house. So it's not, it's not a full third floor addition, it's set back in two directions. This is the front elevation here on page G3. You can see here, I have a dash line on this upper left drawing of the front that shows the old roof profile. So that's the existing roof, and that shows you how much farther, how much higher it would actually make the house.
What is that, what is that measurement?
What's the difference?
Yeah, yeah.
It's five feet higher than it is now. And then on the side here, you'll see this is, we have a couple small dormers. These are typically required in a project like this because we have to get stairways up into the attic, and so we have these areas that are more than two foot of wall, which is what's creating this third-story situation. And here, actually, we have to take our height from the highest roof, so we are taking our height off of these dorm rooms, but actually the main, the main roof itself, if we were to take the height from there, it would be a lot lower, but we're, we are forced, not forced, but we are required to use those dormers to determine.
I think, I think you mentioned, from a square footage perspective, we would comply as a half-foot, as a half-story.
That's correct.
Right, because we've got the dormers that, the walls that exceed two feet, by definition it's considered full.
That's right.
It's more volume.
Yeah, it's more volume, but, but, yeah.
Yes.
Not more usable space, that's that.
These two side elevations give you a pretty good idea of how large that addition actually is, you can see it's set in pretty significantly off the front and the back.
And we'll, we'll, we'll have our planner just run through the variances, but let's, let's just take, just address the parking for a moment.
Yeah, so if I go to the... So this is the ground level plan. You can see there's a, there's a clear area that runs all the way from the front of the house to the back. The house is also set 9B off of the curb, off of the property line, so we do have room in the front. Now I have a diagram to help you see that, which you'll probably have to mark because I don't think we have it.
We'll mark that as a A1, looks like it's sheet V5.
What is that for the record? Uh, parking layout. So this dash line indicates the property lines. This here is that recess I was speaking of earlier that we created in that foyer area. What that does is, is it allows us to fit a car. Now these smaller dash lines are actually RSI compliant parking spaces, 9x8. So you can see here that we're able to fit three legitimate RSI parking spaces along the side there, off of the property line, and then, or inside the property line, I should say, and then additional car on that side. So four cars off-street.
Where's the sidewalk being hurt, outside the parking line or on the parking line?
Uh, I believe it's outside the parking line. Yeah, unfortunately it's not showing on my site on here.
There's no sidewalks, I don't think, there.
There's no sidewalks?
Yeah. Okay, but either way, even if there's not a sidewalk, the parking spaces are within the property.
It's, it's pavers right to the curb.
Tony, just talk a little bit about that storage space that we're partially enclosing.
Right, it's an unconditioned space, it's just a protected way to get into the house from outside. Again, we're removing, removing the exterior staircases there now, so when you pull up, you're going to walk in and be somewhat protected. It's not a conditioned space, but you'll be protected as you walk in and get to the main stairway and get into the main level.
Okay. Just going through, just going through the reports for a moment.
Yeah, I can, I can make it easy.
Go ahead.
Tony, you started putting the notes that I want for governors and leaders and for, for other items on the plans, on every plan now, so it's good. So even though those are in my letter, they're taken care of. One thing I'd like you to do is put the elevation of the first floor and the second floor and the third floor.
Face off of them?
Yeah, you know, off a, a slide certificate.
Sure.
And of course, I'd like to see the signature block a little larger.
Okay, no problem. Christine, anything in your letter?
Um, I don't think, for Tom, I can wait until the plan.
If you're willing to consider the, the fourth car, the third car on the side of property, which extends all the way to the front property line?
Well, I think we only, we only need four. I'm sorry, we only need three, that's a fourth.
Yeah, where's that picture of cars, there's three, three on the front or four?
There's, there's three on the side.
So that third car is on the setback end?
No, no, it's in the front. Yeah, it's in the front setback.
In the front, oh, in the front setback, yeah.
Yeah, so you can't have, you can't claim as a, as a credit for parking spaces in the setback without a variance. You're not allowed to park cars legally in a setback.
Setback or property?
No, setback, they're on the setback before.
Okay.
I don't know if it's a variance or a waiver.
I think it's a waiver. I think it's a waiver, and also your ordinance requires, how many spaces would your ordinance require?
Two, but they say we have to go by, uh...
Right, so we have to comply with the ordinance, and so...
Yeah, and I believe actually...
I think it's a waiver, since it's an RSI requirement, I believe that's correct.
And I, I believe actually, you can keep going here.
Yeah.
There's room, there's more room here, so we could...
It's a setback back there.
Well, you got to prove this to the center. You're right.
Will we consider a waiver then?
Yeah. Any questions for Mr. Condouris?
We're thinking.
Taking time.
Everybody good? Thank you, sir. Anyone in the public here to ask a question about the testimony? No, thank you. Anthony?
Can you add that plan to the set piece and then reach minute ones?
Yes.
Point back section.
Mr. Chair, I have our planner. Give us some brief testimony on the variances. Andy, you've got, you've got two exhibits?
Two exhibits.
Good evening. Please raise your right hand to be sworn, you swear the testimony you already did here tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name, file your license.
Andrew Johnny.
Andrew Janiew.
Okay, Andrew, if you would, for the record, just give the board the benefit of your background experience as a professional planner here in New Jersey.
Mr. Janiew testified before this board and then
Okay, thank you.
We accept his credentials and license and the grant.
Okay.
He has a question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Andy, obviously, you visited the site, you reviewed the plans, you reviewed the ordinances and the master plan, correct?
Correct, and the review letters that have been issued by the professionals. And I'm familiar with the name of the, the hearing.
Yeah, so you can just go right into the zoning, the application from a zoning perspective and the variances that are proposed.
Certainly, so this is within the boroughs of downtown district. The board on easel is an aerial photograph outlining the subject property in yellow, which will need to mark as A2.
Would be the aerial photo?
Eight?
Eight two.
Again, one point after the board is there's a, yeah, sort of a distinction in the sides of Atlantic Way. Where if you're looking at the, in this photograph, the top portion of Atlantic Way, what you have is a mix of homes there that are two and a half and three stories. Matter of fact, looking at your tax records, all but the Goldens residence and this resident are listed as two and a half stories. Lot nine is actually listed as a three-story home on your tax records. The only compliant lot here would be lot one. Everyone else is deficient in area and width. Most of the homes there range from 28 to 42 feet, it's a variety. So it is, it is a, call it a challenge when you're working with these, with the lots here. And heard one tonight, heard many applications in this board in terms of dealing with undersized lots and trying to make the existing homes livable. So we're here again asking for relief. The variances that are being requested this evening include a D6 variance for height. We are asking to add what is technically a third story, but that story will be set back from the front and rear of the home, I believe by 11 feet from the front wall of the home and about almost 12 feet from the rear home. So that addition is concentrated to the center of the home. And we'll read, you know, very much in a step-back manner as you come down the street to this area. We're also seeking a relief for, I mean, well, let me go through the existing conditions and the variances associated with those. So this is a 2,437 square foot lot, 4,000 is required. The lot width requirement is 50 feet. This lot is 32 and a half feet. The front setback, you've heard many comment about the removal of the stairs, improving that condition, but the zone requires 25 feet. But again, looking at the area, you'll see it's very much consistent with the rhythm of the, the street frontage here along Atlantic Way. We're seeking a relief for the side yard setback where seven feet is required, where 3.74 and 3.81 exist, and these are proposed to remain. We're not changing the footprint of the home. Essentially, that addition is going straight up in the center of the home. Combined setback requirement is 15 feet, 7.55 exists and will remain. The rear setback is 15 feet required, two feet exist to the deck. Maximum building coverage is 50% permitted. We are at 55.39. That's an existing condition that will remain. With respect to overall lot coverage, we are compliant. So as, as I had mentioned earlier, this is an undersized lot. The existing home, there's two stories. And we are seeking to do that, the addition of the third story to the top. And I'd like to just mark three photographs of the character here along Atlantic Way. This is a photo board with three photographs.
That'll be D83.
For the record, all these photographs are dated January 4th and are essentially walking down Atlantic Way from east to west. Starting here, we have 15 Atlantic Way. As you can see, it's essentially a two and a half, three-story home. Going next to that, 13, 11, nine and seven, we are seven here located. So you can see we're somewhat the lower roof, roof line here as all these homes read with two and a half to three stories. And actually, they're a little bit more forward than what we're proposing in terms of the visibility of that top level. And then finally, again, nine, seven, that's us with the funding here or the writts and then five. Again, these are all three living levels, whether they qualify as two and a half stories or three levels. We are essentially a two-story home. And I think this addition would very much fall within the character of, of the mix of housing here on Atlantic Way. So the, the top, excuse me, as Tony mentioned, the top floor, it include a fourth bedroom, a bath and a, they're calling it a sunroom, which is basically a play, or a hangout area for the kids, quite frankly. The Goldens have three children. The desire is to give each child their own bedroom. And that is what's necessitating the desire for this addition. With respect to the master plan, your master plan very much stresses the need to maintain the character of the neighborhood and to provide new housing opportunities or to enhance housing opportunities. I know the flavor of this board is essentially, you see a lot of teardowns to the extent that you can maintain the character or work with some, an individual with an existing home. You always have been very receptive to that. I think that's the case here. We have a two-story home, we need to add a fourth bedroom to this. It's very much in keeping with the character as such. I think it's on point with your master plan. With respect to the public purposes, because an application shouldn't just be for the benefit of the applicant themselves. I believe there are two reasons within municipal land use law that are quite frankly fostered by this application. The first is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, regions, and the preservation of the environment. This is a single-family network, neighborhood. We are a single-family home. We're hoping to make that more livable and as, as we take smaller homes and make them larger, certainly become more desirable for full-time residents. I know that's heard the board tonight saying that's not something they take into consideration, but to the extent that you have something that can be maintained within the character and be conducive to full-time residency, I think that's certainly a benefit to not only the applicants, but to the community. And finally, to encourage the coordination of various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development with the view of lessening the cost of such development and for the more efficient use of land. And we have, we have a perfectly good home here in terms of bones of the home. We do need another bedroom just to accommodate the familial living arrangements here. We are seeking to expand that and it's, it's efficient to put an addition onto a house as opposed to coming in and building new. And as we indicated, that had we come in and built new, you know, we, we may be able to raise the house or whatnot. But in this case, this house was built originally in compliance with, with your ordinances and we are seeking to put that, well, the half-story and full story, the third story onto this in comparison to the character of the neighborhood. So what we're seeking tonight in terms of the height really is a D6 variance. We are more than, more than 10% of the permitted height, in excess of what's permitted here. Because this is an undersized lot, our height is capped at 30 feet. We are asking for 38. The existing home, I believe, was totally 33 feet?
The existing, uh, yes.
Yeah, so I think the existing home took advantage of the three feet. The addition would essentially add another five feet to the height of this home and it would put it in a very much consistent roof line with what you see here in these photographs of Long Atlantic Way. So when we're looking at a D6 variance, this is qualified under the Coventry Square criteria and not the Medici criteria, meaning the use is permitted. And we focus on the deviation. Can the lot accommodate the deviation as requested? Can the lot accommodate the additional five feet in height? Given the context here, given what we have surrounding us, I certainly believe that it's in character. It's not going to create any harm. It's not going to create any type of issue in terms of light air, open space that doesn't already exist along Atlantic Way here. So I think from a positive standpoint, this is a good application. With respect to the negative criteria, one minute, related to the use variance. We are consistent with your master plan in terms of accommodating the character of the neighborhood. And when we look at any detriment to the neighborhood, we took that, look at the nuisances and I'll go through that in the bulk variance relief as well. But this is a single-family neighborhood. We're accommodating parking on site, as was just discussed. We're not creating any additional noise or trash or drainage issues. We're essentially following the same footprint of the building, going straight up. It will be set back to soften the appearance of the height. So when we look at it in terms of the D variance relief, I think this is a good, good application, qualifies for the D6 variance. And that brings us to the bulk variance system. And bulk variances can be C1 hardship variances or the balance test for the C2 criteria. In this case, we have an undersized lot with deficient width. There's nothing we can do about it. That's what drove the footprint of this building. We're honoring that footprint of this building, going straight up. So when we look at the relief that we're seeking, really the, the crux of it is because we're stepping back the house for the front and back, the real crux in terms of what could potentially be an issue would be the side yard setback because we are going straight up along the sidelines. And, and not for the entirety of the building, just for a portion where you see that it's kind of like a, a T-shaped addition to the building. So the question is, will that create any kind of issue to the neighbors? So that qualifying under the bulk variance relief, we look at whether it's applicable to a specific piece of property. It is. Whether any of the purposes of municipal land use law would be fostered. I read two into the record that I believe would apply to the bulk relief sought. That the benefits of the deviation would outweigh any detriment. Again, the benefits of this application is making this more livable, reinvesting in the property and making it more conducive to year-round residency. With respect to the negative criteria, can the variance be granted without substantial detriment to the neighborhood? I don't, or to the public good, for that matter. I don't see anything here that becomes a substantial detriment. It's very much consistent with the character of homes on either side and along that side of Atlantic Way. So I don't think we can say that this is a substantial detriment to the neighborhood because it's spot on with the character of the neighborhood. And I don't believe it'll substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan. Again, because the zone plan looks to foster the character of the neighborhood and doing that. So when we look at this on balance, I think the bulk relief can be granted. It's a, it's a factor of an existing home that we're looking for a simple addition on along this roof line. And I'd ask the board if they have any questions.
No? Anyone in the public have a question about the witness's testimony?
I believe your planner may have had a
Oh.
No, um, I think, uh,
I think we hit it.
You got it.
Yeah, I think Andy covered everything.
Thank you.
One, two, three.
With the twice, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Andy, I have a question. There are, when you turn this house into the three-story, there are requirements for three stories to, to G-Rush or flagrant. So what you're just doing is one bedroom on top floor. Does that trigger any of those changes to the fourth wall?
It does not only in the construction of that bedroom.
No, as long as we're under one-third of the floor below, we can still qualify as five-eight construction. So you don't have to do any of this.
You're not implementing that for the other four.
None of it.
It doesn't trigger that.
It does not.
And that because of the square foot?
It doesn't square foot.
But because of the height of the side walls, it triggers the variance for
For the third story.
For people who are on the square foot.
Correct.
It's open to the public. Is there anyone in the public that has a, a question about any of the testimony or the statement? I have a stand-up.
How you doing?
Tom Largy, L-A-R-G-Y. Please state your name for the record. Raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear the testimony you already did here tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Sure do.
And please state your name, spell your last and right.
Tom Largy, L-A-R-G-Y. I'm the attorney for the people who own 14 Mile Away. I'd just like to say that I wish you folks looked out for 14 Mile Away like you apparently are doing here tonight. You allow a house to go up, it puts us in a shadow. I don't know why that was passed and I'm quite upset about it, so. I don't know if you remember that situation. There's a four-story house essentially that puts our house, it's at 14 Mile Away, in a shadow. It was supposed to be 18 feet to the east and somehow it came 11 feet closer to the west and the shadow's there. Thanks for looking out for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the public? Been here in the morning?
Yeah, I'm there right off. And you don't live there.
Please raise, raise your hand to be sworn. Do you swear the testimony you already did here tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name, spell your last and right.
Lou Libertor, L-I-V-E-T-O-H.
In the public, we can't have comments because you can't hear what's going on up here.
Very different. Sure, Lou Libertor, L-I-V-E-T-O-H. We live at 5 Atlantic Way right next door. Just wanted to say that I think they deserve all the same variance they're right to build for their family as we all have on the block. And being the closest neighbor to it there, we have no problem with it. They should have, so. Yeah, it doesn't matter for you guys whether they're good people or not, but they are. So.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Just Mike Welty, W-E-L-T-Y. I'm at 49 Bellevue Place.
Please raise your, do you swear the testimony you already did here tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. I just wanted to second that. The Goldens are a great addition to our neighborhood, which is not always the case when there's renters in some of these buildings. So everyone in the neighborhood that I know is all for it. It's, it's a great addition to existing structure. So just wanted to say that the neighborhood is all in favor and our families as well.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? If not, public portion is now closed. Discussion or motion? I'll make the motion to approve this application. One second. Roll call, please.
Good. Mr. Captain?
Yes.
Chairman Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Correa?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman DeSaro?
Yes.
Mr. Monks?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman of the Board. Thank you.
Any other business before the board this evening? Do you have applications that you want to make? Thanks, folks. We're, we're just about done. If you're not done yet. Just for a minute, we're almost done. What was your question?
I asked that they would schedule for the March 12 meeting to change what was on. I'll, I'll vote. Okay.
He doesn't want to.
He wants to build a second staircase. So it'll be two staircases on one line? Okay, so you don't have to discuss that.
Is there an application?
Yeah.
The application will be a March 12. So that, there is an application?
There are two more in the pipeline. There's, there are two more in the pipeline. There are two more applications that came in the pipeline. Southway and there's another one.
Southway is going to be at lot 26.
Southway needs some, uh, flood, uh, playing capitalization.
Which, which?
I think it's 14 Southway. So they have to figure out whether or not the property is 50% more than what's existing. The garage. Building partners ask for those, ma'am, got me.
All right, Mr. Chairman, then I'll make a motion to a German, if there's something else.
All in favor? We need a jersey.